Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is public participation. If anyone from the public would like to speak tonight, please state your name and address for the record. I think at least one person here is a Merrimack resident but isn't here for that necessary reason. So I will close public participation. Her chances closed. Till later. And we are on to item number three, which is a formal hearing on student services budget for 2018-2019. And I bring to the table the Director of Special Student Services.
You skipped it.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. The ones who were here first. You know what? You have to wait because you weren't here first. How about that? Sorry. How about the formal hearing on James Master Cola Upper Elementary School? So I'll bring to the table Principal Marshall McGill and Vice Principal Bill Morris. Sorry, guys. And you were the most timely of all of us, so you should go first.
Good evening. Thank you. I want to share with you our primary focus for the 2018-2019 school year for James Master Cola Upper Elementary School. Significant factors continue to be our purchase of texts and instructional resources to support students at a variety of reading levels in grades five and six. Also, the continued purchase and implementation of a standards-based math program for students in five and six, including instructional resources as well as consumable student materials. Additionally, we're asking this year for the replacement of our 30-plus-year-old kiln and the stacking racks to support art instruction at the upper elementary school. We continue to ask for the replacement of cafeteria tables. This would be the third phase of cafeteria table replacement in our building. And finally, the replacement of science room stools with classroom chairs. I'd like to start the evening or continue with the evening by answering some questions that were posed to us by the board, so if I could take the time to do that at this time. First, I'd like to start from Board Member Schneider was the ask of the replacement of our kiln, asking if it's at the end of its life or can the cost be defrayed? And then some planning that we've done for that. Our kiln, the date that we have of it being new and replaced was 1983, so puts it at about 34 going on 35 years old. We have been, over the last several years since about 2015, we have been making some minor repairs on it. We've had to replace certain components. We've done some venting system for a little over $900. We've had to replace some switches on it for $200-$300. Also, we've done a quick fix most immediately. The lid of it, the bricks on it, are starting to crack and fall in, so we've had that removed. Our teacher has cemented those, and we've been told by the kiln companies that that's a quick fix. We don't know what that means because they can't tell us exactly. Was that something that'll last one firing, several firings? We don't know, but we have done that. What we really need on it for repairs, if we're not looking at something new, would be a lid replacement for about $600 plus shipping, which puts that at about $750. If we have them install it, and because of their travel time, would be about another $300. And also, we would need some elements replaced on it for a little bit over $100. So those would be things that we would have to do if we didn't move towards a new kiln at this time. Then Board Member Gualyumi had some questions, asking in reference to our speakers for our Project Safeguard program. And we have a variety of different speakers who speak. I'm going to pull that out right now so I can share that with you. We've moved that program into our building. We used to have it out, but because of just that cost and not the funding that we used to have with grants in the area, we've moved that into the building. So we offer a program for students and parents for a half a day. The parents have an option for three sessions, but we continue the program for students in the afternoon. So some of our speakers are, for example, the New Hampshire Teen Institute. They come in and do three presentations. They're a theater group, and they talk about safe choices. We also have programs like Jack Agati, who comes in and talks about encouragement. People like Ben Garber, who comes in and offers workshops for parents, taming the beast within and keeping kids out of the middle, are some of his titles. We have Marco the Magician that comes in. We also have LaBelle, Mr. LaBelle comes in. He's our keynote speaker. He talks about making good life choices for students. We have the Deanna's Theater that come in. They do an anti-bullying presentation or several of them. And then Jude Courier comes in and talks about bringing up children through the teen years. So those presenters will come in and typically do a morning session. We'll do a second session. Some of them might even offer a third. We also involve the Merrimack Police Department that comes in and does some presentations. We have Officer or Detective Prentice, who will come in with the middle school to do a presentation. Bill has so nicely coordinated with the coaches at the high school, and they come in in the afternoon and provide for students. So those are some of our presenters that we have for Project Safeguard. So really, quite a few people that we've had for a number of years, and we get good reviews from parents and students for what they're presenting. And if you'd, I have those prices, if you'd be interested in those, as to what we pay them in addition to that, if you'd like to know that. We had a question about, do we actually use typewriters? We have one typewriter that's in the old office area, and it's, at this point, rarely used, so, Cinder, we will kindly take out that typewriter for the next time we do a budget, because we really don't do a lot of support with that now, but we did for a period of time use it.
But all of a sudden, there's that one point where it just catches your attention.
Yes. So, thank you.
So it might just be that some of the line items, I noticed it across some of the other schools, maybe just the way our finance line items have always read as well, maybe it's in there by from...
I can, I can say one thing that I know for a fact in central office, sometimes there's some old forms that we do use the typewriter, and we have a maintenance contract through, I forget the name of the company, I should remember it because they've been around for so long, in order to service the typewriter. So, you know, you're probably in the same situation where there's just some things that just we type still to this day, as I hang my head in shame and look embarrassed, so.
It is an electric typewriter.
I bet Nancy Rose can help you.
Oh, she are.
Another question that Board Member Gualyumi had asked was, tell you more about the consumable supplies, manipulatives, and curricular resources that we use. And in that supply item, we provide students with individual whiteboards, so we take those out of there. They require the use of dry erase markers as well as erasers. We take, we use graph paper still, comes out of there, number counters, counting chips, and then also plastic covers, because sometimes teachers will use instead of a hard whiteboard paper and that. So those are some of the types of supplies that would come out of that math supply budget. She also had a question about, can you tell me more about the programs for homeschool and community collaboration? Yes. We're involved with partners in education with the Blue Ribbon Volunteerism Application, and then the ceremony, so we would pay the fees for the application, as well as our volunteers or anyone through that program that would go to the breakfast on that day. Also, we're involved with them with the Gold Circle Business Partners, and we would pay for that application, as well as those business members to come to breakfast for the celebration on that day. We also hold a holiday breakfast, and we invite them to them about mid-year. We do a PFA Volunteer Appreciation Tea. We also run a program that's called Success Is Up To You, and there are community readers that work with us, and we have them come in, and then if we'd have any expenses associated with our Veterans Day Assembly, they'd all kind of come under those community relations. Then there was a question a little bit more about math, texts, and teacher resources. I did bring some materials this evening, I put them on the table behind you there to show you some examples of the new resources that we have for students. So it would be anything from the journals that students reduce to the teachers' additional workbooks. They have resource books, they have assessments. Everything that's provided with our new math program in print is also provided digitally, so that's available to teachers and to students, so a lot of resources that are there that are provided through that program. So I hope you take a few minutes to look through that.
And are those the consumable, the ones, will they be replaced every year? I guess the reason it caught my attention is because we just did the whole overhaul of the math curriculum, and so it was a very large budget item last year, so I was just curious. It caught, again, caught my attention because I was seeing it...
In both texts and consumables, the numbers were consistent for prior years. That was the same question I think a lot of us had, versus having texts that would be stable, or actually dropped this year because we bought them last year, but consumables, we assume, would be recurring. So that was really, I think, the source of our question.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think the work that we have done this past year was to supply that classroom teacher with the resources and the materials that they needed. What we would continue to do this coming year would buy, be, to purchase those resources and materials for our special educators, for our Title I tutors, for our gifted and talented teachers, so there would still be some expenses to then be able to get materials into the hands of every educator that we have.
So I guess, following on that, on that note, would we see a drop next year then? Because we would have had, had the base supplies go to all of the teachers for the math, at least, not obviously other subjects.
Well, I would think that if we're supplying all those materials, there are going to be some recurring costs that are going to be there, but I wouldn't expect they'd be as high because of how that site license is for access to materials for students.
Okay. Cinder?
I have to, I don't have my budget book open to that particular page, but I think, you know, going forward too, it helps to see what's consumable and what's the actual tax, because then you kind of, you can kind of say, hey, they're consumable, we're going to go through them, it's going to be, you know, probably so much per student, teachers.
Go ahead.
Andy?
There's actually, there's two sections. There's the consumable, which is in this budget, for example, $2,100, and then in the textbook section is $22,000, so it is divided in there. But I think one of the point of your question is, we budgeted last year $22,900.
Right.
This year, $22,480, but the previous year was over $19,000. So I guess, to follow on to your question, the consumables are pretty flat, but the text areas, it was $19,000, then $22,000, and then $22,000 again. I believe that the $22,000 and $22,000 reflected the new program that we've done.
Yes.
What, do you remember what the $19,000 was for two budget years ago?
Well, at that time, we would have been paying for, excuse me, we would have been paying for journals for students, they were more consumable materials. Now with the new program, we buy a site license, and with that site license, we get for a five-to-six-year period of time, believe it's six years, we get those journals that come to us as a part of that, so that's a longer lifespan. With our previous program, we were buying those journals every year, and that is the student text.
So there's a difference between consumables and what these texts are, which are journals, which are part of the supply program or something? I guess, I guess it's a little confusing as to what the difference is between those, and what will the run rate get? Is that $22,000 this year, what would the net run rate next year be, for example? Just to give us some idea.
Yeah, because I think what I might expect is that maybe we would have a decrease for a couple of years until we get to the point where we have to maybe replace some of them that are replaceable or...
Or get to that new site license again in six years.
Okay.
I think we would, those first two years, as we're getting everyone the materials that they need for the program, and then I would expect it would go down for a few years until we get to that point where we're having to up that after that six years, that site license again, and then that's a per-student cost.
Okay.
So you just took one for the team, because I think you just covered the same question for Thornton's Reads and Master Cola, so...
So this is just a different structure in how we've paid for them before, is what it really comes down to. It's a different way, a subscription more based versus a tangible product.
A year by year.
Yeah.
And even though we, we get a tangible product, we do get a journal, we get a volume one and a volume two for every student, they also have access to that online, but they actually have that for their hand. But the way that it's done is you buy that site license for a student for six years. So this year would have been year one, next year would be year two. Once we get past those six years, then we'd be upping those site licenses again, but there would be a few years where those costs would go down.
So if enrollment changes, if it goes up, then we would have to purchase some additional licenses?
Or we could adjust those, you know, and talking with Pearson Education, for example, my population changes a lot with being two years at a school. So this year, I have like 255 students in fifth grade and 287 in sixth grade. Well, next year, I'm going to have 255 in sixth grade, not 287, but I'm going to have a much larger number in fifth grade, so they will allow us to adjust that because we've bought those site licenses.
Got it.
So that we won't find that we're saying, okay, we have 287 in sixth grade, but I don't need to use that many. They'll let me offset that with the fifth grade.
Okay.
That's my understanding of it.
Okay.
And then also, Board Member Gualyumi had asked about our kiln and had asked about our cost compared to a kiln that was recently replaced at Reed's Ferry. We priced out our kiln to replace what we currently have, and that's an AMCO kiln, so when we went to replace it, we went to replace exactly what we have. I believe they bought one that's called by, it starts with an S, Skill, Skull, Scud, something like that is the name of the kiln company. I saw it today, I might have it written down somewhere, but it's a unique name, but, I mean, we could look at that cost, but when we priced ours out, we priced out exactly what we have. We also know that, know that with our population, we need a larger kiln for it to be able to fire the ceramics, a larger number of them, so we would require one that's a little bit Then we had a couple of questions from Board Member Schoenfeld. She had asked about how many students are served in our Gifted and Talented Program. We have, in our building this year, 27 total. We have 18 students at grade five and nine students at grade six. Those are students who qualify for the Gifted and Talented Program. We also service approximately another 35-plus students with enrichment in the areas of math and vocabulary. And this is just in our building. We share our Gifted and Talented Teacher with James Master Cola Elementary School, so. And I know that with our students in the Gifted and Talented Program, she's done this for many years, she uses her money wisely and does a very good job. She collaborates very closely with teachers when it comes to resources and materials for the math enrichment and vocabulary enrichment, so she'll use the resources around the building to help her support the program. Then Board Member Schoenfeld had also asked, can you provide a sense of how the fiction and nonfiction materials funded in our budget differ from those that are a part of the library funding? And do the two funding channels collaborate and how? And yes, we do collaborate. We talk with Nancy, we talk with our librarian quite a bit. Our language arts coordinator works very closely with them. The materials that we are purchasing are materials that are purchased for direct instruction with students. Typically, it's a lot of short text. We're using that in guided reading and in our tiered response to instruction, instruction that we provide to students. The library is typically buying a novel or a full book. How we would work collaboratively with them, if we're doing literature studies or maybe an author study, we're going to look, of course, how many of those texts do we have in our library available? How many might we have in our leveled library? Or how would we coordinate together to have enough for us to use for guided reading or for us to use for our tiered instruction or literature groups? So we collaborate with them to pool those resources together when we need them for students, so. Are there any other questions?
No, but there was some research done while you were presenting, and the brand's name is Scott, S-K-U-T-T.
Okay, thank you. I knew it was, it was a unique name.
Not something you'd name your kids necessarily. Maybe the dog.
Or a kiln.
Or a kiln, yeah. Excellent. Based on, are there any other questions from board members? Seeing none, we thank you for a thorough rendering of the questions that we had, and obviously, the math one was, was the big one because we were trying to figure that all out, but we know it's new. And so, if you're a, you're brethren at the elementary schools, we'll be very happy they don't have to answer those questions now.
Glad I could help.
Thank you so much. And now, a formal hearing on the student services budget for 2018-19 with Director John Fabrizio. It is your turn this time, I promise. Well, that's what I get for taking off my glasses for the sake of vanity.
Welcome and happy new year, everyone. So thank you for the opportunity to present the student services budget, which is a different, different name this year, but a lot of the same components as you'll see in my budget. So I'm going to begin a little bit differently than my colleagues. I'm going to start with kind of a little bit of an overview, and then I will jump right into the questions, if that's okay, because I think that the special services budget is a little unique than some of the other, the other budgets. And I like to point out kind of the context of where it comes from, because it, it's kind of a budget that's grown from the bottom up, and I, and I'd like to talk about that when I have the opportunity, both here for the board members, but also for the public too. Thank you again. This year, it's different. Like, as I said, tonight, I'm going to present a budget that's really based on student-specific, child-specific budget. It really is built from the students' needs. It's built by teams. It's built with parents involved in it. It's built by following many state and federal regulations and laws. As, as, as we move forward, influences the budget because decisions are made at the table, and then it's grown up, and it grows through the system and comes to me, and we put that budget together to hopefully meet the needs of the students in our future. So, so basically, it really comes down to two regulations that, on every given day, we need to follow in our world of special education. And it comes down to least restrictive environment and free and appropriate education. And really, to give a little quick, two-second, real digest overview of what those two laws are, FAP really is something that must be available to all students with disabilities. It's provided at public expense. It's provided that's incongruent with the IEP that's been developed, and it meets all the state standards that we need to meet, and follows all of our regulations and laws. And this includes students who are both in school and those that may have been suspended or unfortunately expelled, but we still have to provide FAP for them, if they're with us or not. What's appropriate, again, is decided by a case-to-case basis at the table with the team. Least restrictive environment, LRE, as we know it, all of our acronyms in the world of special ed. It's the maximum extent appropriate, all right, for children with disability, including children in public, private institutions, or other facilities that are educated with students who are disabled and non-disabled. Our goal is, under, under least restrictive environment, is always to educate the child in the regular classroom in our school with their non-disabled peers. Sometimes that's done within our, within the regular classroom with multiple, with few supports, then with multiple supports. Sometimes that's done in specialized classrooms, resource rooms. In other places, we need to go to service students. Sometimes occupational therapy, speech therapy. All these things happen within the building, but in separate rooms and separate places. And then, again, as I talked about, we're really, our goal is to keep kids in the classroom. Each agency must ensure that they have a level of service too, so we start off, and you know that we've talked about this around the table. We've talked about our integrated preschool program and how we start there. Then we try to go into first, into kindergarten, then the first grade, and we have to offer, within first grade, multiple opportunities for kids to learn in that environment, and we do that. And then oftentimes, if our environment, which I'll talk about in a little bit more detail later on, is determined by the team, the child's not progressing, not making a meaningful educational benefit, and we have to make decisions, there are tough decisions around the team, about what is the best placement for that child to meet FAP and least restrictive environment. Any questions about FAP or LRE? That was pretty quick, but I just wanted to give an overview. They're really, those are the two guiding principles that lead us every day when we're working. And then, just to give you some brief overview of numbers, this year, our numbers, again, we've had a steady decline over the course of the years that I've been in special services, now student services. We went from in 2013, 14, 680 students, 14, 15, 676, 15, 16, 665, 16, 17, 663, and then this year, we're right about 659, right about now. So we're kind of, it's steady, two, three, four students. We're going on this little kind of path, which is nice, which means a lot of the work we've done around RTI and interventions and universal design and all those things I've come to the table to talk about, the increase in our preschool programs, all those things really seem to, if not where, where I showed you some trends last year, are increasing in some places. We're staying pretty steady or in a slight decline over, over the years I've been there, which is, which is good. It says that, yes, we're continuing to improve our programs. So as you look through the, my budget for student services, please keep in mind that we're doing a lot of projection right now as it goes on, that I'm trying to project based on over, over, over 659 meetings throughout the course of this year as they happen. A team will get together with their parents and decide what services a child may need going forward, what the right LRE in, and, and what's the right FAP for that student. They're going to do that over the course of this year, and they have been since the start of the year. So understand this is a prediction of what it is a lot of times in my budgeting, what those teams will decide in doing that as we move forward. So overall, you'll see my budget, it's 2.76% increase, and a lot of those are due to some busing, some contracts with paras, split air conditioning systems, and of course, a request in there for the second of two vans that we, we replaced one this year, which is wonderful, and the second one is on its way out, and we're holding on to hope we get through the year and, and need another one. I'll, I'll address some of the auto-district costs and talk about kind of that process because I had a couple, two or three board member questions around there, so I'll do that more when I'm answering questions. But just understand that, and keep in mind, please, that this is a, a balance game that we, that we have to do sometimes, and it's hard to, to look at, as I said, or prediction. And the auto-district placements, it's kind of a misnomer sometimes to think that, well, they're much more expensive sometimes than our programs within the school. Well, yes, an individual, if you took an individual and just, we're paying for that one program, however, we're bringing in a lot of services to our students here in Merrimack, and a lot of students, a lot of occupational therapies, physical therapies, counseling, sometimes vision therapies, things that we need to do to bring in to keep these students in our public schools, because that's where they should be, and we try to do that the most, the most we can. That's also very expensive when you add up those salaries and the, and the cost of benefits and parent educators and all those things. It's also very expensive, so just understand that it may be that we've had to place some, but it's not, a financial cost is sometimes not the, the driving force behind it. It's what's to meet the child's least restrictive environment and meet FAP for that child, so there's a meaningful educational benefit. So that's kind of my big picture overview, and now I'll go into, is there any questions so far before I jump into my questions? Okay. I'll jump in. And I will start with Chair Barnes, had a few questions for me, and I think the first one really starts, she asked for an explanation of the services for some of the auto-district placements in schools that we deliver, and these can't be covered within the resources of the districts. The costs are staggering, roughly 3.8 million of the operating budget, and, and an understanding of the unique offerings that will be delivered and beneficial for our students. And I think, within the board packet, I provided a, a chart of really what least restrictive looks like and a continuum of services, and I also provided the laws that kind of govern, you know, places... And I also provided the laws that kind of govern, you know, placement and what we have to do to make sure that students are having a meaningful educational benefit. And I think that when a disability warrants other interventions and supports that a classroom can't provide, or we cannot provide within the classroom, the federal law requires us, as a district, to provide these in separate places. And we have teams meet, and we have parents involved in those teams. We make decisions with including the parents' major input into that. We often have to look at multiple placements to find the right, appropriate one for a child. This is done by Stacy Conte, our district coordinator. And we look at programs that meet their need and their specialized need as a student with a disability. These programs that are out there is one of the questions. And really, each year, we receive a book from the state of New Hampshire that really outlines each of the programs. I brought a copy of it, and it outlines the programs, what disabilities they service, how, what they're specialized in. Certain programs specialize in maybe early elementary students with severe disabilities and autism. Others deal with more older students and more adult students with emotionally handicapped disabilities. And this book outlines really what those are. And then the rates are set by the state of New Hampshire for the programs in New Hampshire. They set the rate, they tell us the rate. If our child is appropriately placed there, they have to be accepted there. We go on tours and interviews. If they're accepted, that's the cost we incur, once they're accepted into that program. And we also, because of our location, we have an obligation to place them geographically as close to home. Sometimes, because we are, where we sit in the state of New Hampshire, in our South Central tier, we do go in Massachusetts to place, because it is closer to home and it can provide a service that does that. And again, Massachusetts sets their rates, and we pay an out-of-state rate sometimes for that.
Do you have a question on that?
I realize you're being very careful, and appropriately so, to not describe specific children. And I realize that every child is incredibly unique, and you're emphasizing that. But I think perhaps part of the point of the question was to give to those who have no sense of what we can provide versus what we'd have to look for elsewhere. What might be examples of that?
Sure. Sometimes we have students with, you know, they may have, and again, I'm going to be careful here because there's few that have certain, but there are certain medical conditions that students are in special care facilities that provide for them. They may have, you know, breathing issues, things that are more severe, that they could not function and move within our, safely within our buildings and our schools. Sometimes, the disability is a violent disability. And it really is something that causes them to be unsafe for themselves and others in our schools. And it's the best decision made to have FAP for that child in learning. Although the consideration for FAP is individualized, it does, we are a public institution, and sometimes they have to be able to learn in that environment. Sometimes, it's the students that have a unique chromosomal disability. We've had that come through. Students who have had violent behavior or criminal behavior that have been placed by the courts. And we cost-share there. They pay for the residential side, and we pay for the educational side. And it's a court placement. We don't have say in that. That's done by a judge, and they pretty much ask you at that point, can you meet FAP within that facility? And we answer usually to the affirmative, because we have some say in relationships coming to play there, that we know the different facilities and what's appropriate for kids as they're placed. Sometimes, it's kids who have moved in already that are placed, and we annually review them. And we say, is that an appropriate placement, and is FAP being met there? And if so, they stay there, and we incur the cost into our district. Is that sufficient? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And then, the next question that I was asked was more of an observational question. Chair Barnes said, it's about the charter school funding. 132,038 of our operating budget is never used in our district. These monies are delivering special ed students in Merrimack choosing to attend charter school. This is an additional to the transportation of students outside the Student Services, which adds 37,508 into our operating budget for the students who choose to attend charter schools. The total is 169,54546, that is dedicated charter school resources. So, and it's, this is an interesting one. And again, I don't make the laws. My duty as the Student Services Director is to uphold them and make sure that we aren't compliant with them. So, public law, 194B, is a charter school law. And it requires us, if a student attends a charter school, to receive all of his IEP, Individual Service Plan, IEPs, in that facility at the district's cost. This year, we did not have a child receiving transportation. We have in the past. I can't predict the future on this one. So, that's why the money is there. Matt and I have talked about this one, and it is the cost of a bus. So, I'm hoping we have one, you know? And it's kind of one of those things that happened. If a child needs, if the team determines, including the parent, determines this child needs transportation to meet their educational needs, they have to access that education. And if the only way they can do it is with a specialized transportation bus, we have to provide it, no matter if that's in our facility or the parent makes the choice to move to a charter school. And again, that's parent choice to a charter school. It's not a team choice. It's not a choice that we typically would make. The law does not provide for that. That is the law. So, we have to do it.
I just think it's something where, when it first kind of started coming out, we have resources when a child is in district, that we have, you know, a support staff person. And it may have focus on one child, but it can actually support other children. And the charter, having the charter school student get those services, that resource is not available to us for other purposes. So, of our budget, almost $170,000 is focused on charter school funding, of which it does not serve anyone in our buildings. And really, the majority of, other than one bus that goes from Merrimack schools to a charter school, which happens to be located in Merrimack, the rest of it, all but 37,500 of it, is for special services. So, again, those are resources that we're paying for that we can't use in any other way to benefit our district. And that's, again, $132,000. So, that's something just to keep in mind, that, you know, as we are planning our budgets, that these are things out of our hands, because with parental choice, they can go to charter schools. But when they do have an IEP, it will come at a cost to the home district. And that's something that I think is an educational data point for those who may not have insight into how your budget works.
Zinda?
Now, will the charter school sometimes help kind of bridge that, where you can get some economies of scale there, if maybe they have other students from other?
See, I have, again, I talked about relationships, and it's important to have relationships, you know, with other directors around the state and with trying to develop relationships with these charter schools. They're new to the game, best way I can say it. And I am building them, and I'm trying to put myself present in them physically and go see them and see the services for the child to see, is this appropriate for what the needs to the best we can do? Because it's, again, it's not a place that the team has placed. So, we do that. We cost-share. For example, we have one charter school that four districts right now are picking up the cost of one parent educator and sharing that cost. So, it's cost-beneficial to us. I have another situation with, another district is, we have a service provider that I contract to, it's a school psychologist. I've also arranged that they can contract with her while she's in the building. That way, they don't have to pay one of their people to go over there. And our person was there anyhow, so they're just working extra hours, and they're paying that incurred cost over there. You know, it costs us, when we have outside providers, to go over there, like our speech pathologists or our occupational therapists that are contracted services, we often pay transportation to win that cost to go over to those schools and do that. So, it's kind of one of those things that it is the law, and we have to provide the service there.
So, tell me a little bit more about how that works. Is it very similar to how we would do it internally, where it would be a partnership between, we would still go there with the IEP, right? With the team and the resources that we have, meet with the parents. It would be collaborative with the parents and the child?
Sometimes the meeting's on our campus. We don't necessarily have to go there by law. We can hold the meeting, because we're the legal agent, per se. So, they come to us, and we often can hold it there. We've gone there as good faith sometimes, because if they're close by. We've had, you know, we've had schools farther away that we haven't. We've had the meetings on our campus, because it would cost too much to send our staff for a whole day out to a meeting. So, we'd say, we'll hold the meeting here. It's more time-effective and more cost-effective for us to hold the meeting here sometimes.
But at a certain age, when the student's involved in their own IEP, it could be in the student's best interest to hold it there.
Yeah, and sometimes, if we had to, we haven't been there yet. But if I had to bus them to our campus to do that, I'd probably be required to do that, I think, in law.
Okay.
You know, we haven't crossed that yet. It's been, it's been pretty amicable so far. And we're, lack of a better term, figuring it out, because it's a new law for all, for both the charter school and for us. We don't have all the answers yet. And then I think that every year so far, in the time that we've gone through this and done this, it's been different. It's been different kids. It's been different situations. It hasn't been the same. So, it's kind of, we're just, the power of relationships in this one. That's, I'll go back to saying that.
Michael?
Is there any concern that this can possibly go further to private schools, especially with the new laws coming through, that there's going to be funding for private schools and stuff like that, or tuition?
We have to provide transportation for regular ed, transportation for charter schools.
If they're in our district?
If they're in our district, which we do, which is in the district part of the budget. It's around $35,000. If you have a private parochial school or religious school or something like that in the town of Merrimack, you are obligated to provide transportation for them also, if they ask.
I'm talking more about the IEP stuff and stuff like that, so.
So, essentially, the question is, with voucher-ing coming into play, what kind of services will we be expected to provide in budgets?
And? I'm just kind of wondering if you've heard anything, not trying to speculate or anything like that.
I don't think that's been fleshed out, to be honest with you.
It hasn't been fleshed out yet, but it's something we're all concerned about, because it's going to be very hard to predict a year out what people are going to do. If, you know, parents have choice, it depends on what is their obligation to tell us what they're going to do or not. So, to try and predict is going to be difficult. We're all concerned about it.
I guess to follow on that question, is there the potential that it could impact the budget that we're vetting right now?
I think, based on what we've been told so far, no. But a year out, next year, the answer is yes.
Okay. Onward and upward.
Okay. Board Member Schneider had a few questions, and I'll begin. First one, he said, generally across the items in this budget objective, there are increases due to changes in services, service providers. Is this change, is this due to the change in SARES services provided? And if so, what is the overall impact that we may be seeing moving forward? If not, reasons for the change in vendor slash cost. Several items show a 3% increase, cost increase. Is this due to the third and final year of the current support staff agreement or other reasons? So, it's got multiple parts here, so I'm going to break it down into. Part one of the question is, generally across the items, he asked a question about, is there an increase to the changes in service providers? Is this due to changes in SARES services provided? If so, what is the overall impact we see moving forward? Well, the big answer to that is yes. There, this is due to the change in SARES. Last May, I was informed that SARES would no longer be offering contracts to the service providers we had here in the district. And I had to go out and really, again, research, look at other vendors, look what was out there, see whether the districts were using, who they were using. And again, this was May. And we had to find out who could actually, because right now, at that point, we had committed already in all of our IEPs of services for kids. And that was important to me, that we had a quality of service for kids and that we were able to meet the needs and stay compliant with all the IEPs we had in place. So, I was able to find several vendors that were able to do this. And we went with some different vendors to do this, and they're for-profit vendors. And unfortunately, SARES was a nonprofit vendor. It was a pretty good financial place for our district to be in. And we were partnerships with them and part of a partner member. Well, that's gone away. And now, we are working with contracted vendors, who we also have relationships with, but they are also in the business of providing services. And we will continue to work with them. And the second yes is, yes, this will be a reoccurring cost into our future that, moving forward, I believe that it should stay pretty steady for the next couple of budgets. But I think you will see it, as you see it proposed in 1819, you'll probably see similar numbers in 1920, if I can predict that. And then, part two, several items show a 3% cost increase. Is this due to the final and third year of the Contract Support Staff Agreement? Yes, this is mainly due to the, to some of the parent educators' increase in the master contract. And it's also, this permeates into some of my summer school accounts, too, and my extended school year accounts, because they also work with students throughout the year. And that also increases some of those accounts. So, that's the answer to that. Does that answer your question? Okay. So, and when we look at the psychological testing, Andy also asked a question. This item shows significant increase over previous budget years and somewhat higher than actual spent 2016-17. Can you share some background on this, and will it be an ongoing increase in future budgets? Well, unfortunately, the answer is yes again to that one. And I think the reason, this also regulates back to some of the SARES transition. In this line item, I have not only mandated by law the current versions of assessments that I need to have. And as we know, I spoke before about that. They, it seems that Pearson, every three months decides they want a new version. And we have to move forward and buy new assessments. So, all of our psychological assessments, our speech and language assessments, occupational therapy assessments, they all have to be within the current assessment kit. It can't be, we can't use, for example, the WISC III, we can't use. We have to use the WISC V. And that's what the law mandates, use the most current assessments when we evaluate students. So, we're kind of, again, that's by statute, that's by that. That's involved in our testing, our psychological testing. And then?
On that note, you're talking about how Pearson changes, and they're changing?
Pearson's one of the main companies that provide these assessments.
And actually, I think we just looked at their math books right before the meeting started.
Yes.
On that note, is it, would it change regardless of the vendor? Or is?
They are the vendor. They are the vendor that make the assessments that we need.
The vendor to make the assessment.
Yes.
So, there's not really someone you could shop elsewhere on?
If we chose to use different assessments that did that, we could, but we wouldn't be in line with the other districts. We wouldn't be in line with the other, with what's really current and probably best practice out in the field. So, the answer is yes. Could we look at other assessments? Yes, you could. They're not as widely known, they're not as widely validated, they're not as widely normed.
So, basically, it would come at a detrimental cost?
Right. Or we'd have to pay for more outside evaluations, because that's what the team would decide is appropriate for the student. So, we're better off contracting someone in district that knows how to give the assessments that are the most appropriate and current assessments.
Okay.
So, and also, in that, too, it's important to note that this is a SARES change also, that we did contract our school psychologists that did a lot of our assessments and also did some of our counseling, some of our work with our mental health population that no longer has a service to us right now. We've had to go to another vendor to do some of that, that's for-profit. And in doing so, that's there. Although SARES still does offer that service of psychological testing, they, we're no longer a member district, and we don't get a discounted rate there. So, we're competitive with that rate, with the vendor that I found.
Okay. And the last question from Board Member Schneider.
And the last question from Board Member Schneider, most items, um, within transportation attached show 5% increases. This question may be for Matt, but, um, the difference in, in carrying hands transportation contract versus district-wide transportation contract, is this a 5%, 5% increase somewhat will, will something we see annually? So I'll begin, Matt, and you can feel free to jump in if that, that's okay with you.
Why don't I, why don't I start and you can jump in?
You certainly can go.
Okay. I'll, I'll take this one. When we had the prior transportation contract with the previous vendor, it was almost like a bad business decision for them. When the bids came in, they were around $200,000 lower than the closest bid. In fact, some of the other bidders standing around the table said, is that just for one way or is that both ways? So for the last five years, we've been the beneficiary of a very advantageous to the district transportation contract and special ed. And so over the, this year and next year, we're boosting it up to where it should be. And then the increase after this year will be three and a quarter percent per year. So that's the 5% is just there to play catch up as far as what the budget was. But we really had a contract that was that nobody could touch. Um, the whole contract in itself was around, let's say, just in general terms, 600 and something thousand and the closest competitor was 900 grand. So it was that far away. So we saved a lot of money short-term, but now it's, it's time to get back to reality as far as what the true cost of it is in a competitively bid out contract. And then what the increase is going to be over the next three, three to four years is going to be three, three and a quarter percent.
Andy?
So what is, what is the exact term of the contract we're in the middle of for sped?
We're in the first year of a five-year contract.
Okay. And was, and is this the first budget year that we're seeing the, it seemed dramatic that it went up this much. I don't remember last year at the budget time looking to see this, this.
No, because we were under the, the old contract.
So this, this 5% is comparing last year under the previous vendor and the first year under this.
Correct.
The 5% more. And then it hits, once it gets 5%, then it's three and three quarters for the remaining four years of the contract.
Yes. Yeah.
But basically we went from old contract to new contract and RFP went out, bids came in and we took the best of the bids that came in.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, then I have, um, questions from Board Member McGowan. First one is, um, with speech and OT services, please tell me more about the increase in the vendor change. Um, if, um, you know, Cindy, I don't know if you want more information that I've talked about than, than SARES committed change vendors. Do you need more information than that or do you think I've answered? Okay. Thank you. And then the other one was about, um, support in charter schools. And again, it's, it's kind of the same thing. It's, um, in, in 2016, 17, we, we expended about 80% of the total. Last year we brought in 30K and this year 40K. The reason for the increase was how we are tracking the current year. The answer is that yes. Um, at the start of this year, um, we had, again, as I said, it's been different every year. This year we had a family, uh, we had, I want to be careful, some families, um, move in that were, um, from other districts that had students already placed in charter schools. So this was kind of a, a new one for us to say, okay, what do we do now that we haven't had a family come in and the children replaced with IEPs? And we had to, um, work with the other district to figure out the right services. And we cost shared the start of the year with the other district and then we had to figure that out. I know they're currently in the charter school now along with, um, many other students right now. So I would say that that's why the increase. We're looking at projection to next year that those students will stay there. But I, am I solid on that to say they will be there by this time next year? I don't know. Because like I said, I'm still, this is so new to us that we're, every year's a new year so far. And then, um, Board Member Thompson had a few, a couple of questions. Um, various account numbers. I see expenditure in the budget, um, for tutoring lines, uh, line items is far lower than past years. Um, can you please explain the detail, detail during the meeting? Is there a reason why we have funding, funding at this level with the level they're at right now? With tutoring is one of those, um, again, it's a prediction thing. Um, the line items are very, they're, they're, they're estimated. Uh, Matt and I worked together on these to look at kind of what have we expended over the course of the last five years and where do we sit with these? Trying to couple the number. We're predicting hospitalizations on this. We're predicting students who are injured, students who are ill, students who can't come to school for various social emotional reasons. We are, we are trying to, um, um, provide for students who are disabled and students who, who aren't identified with disability, really what their forecast of the year will be. The money, the money has to be there by statute to have money available to tutor. Um, we have it available and that's the number kind of, um, is our, um, estimate on where we think we will be based on previous years and previous costs. Does that answer? Mike, or do you have further follow-up on that?
I, I guess I'll have to go and look back further years because I mean, I'm seeing, and I'm guesstimating here, about like a $50,000 delta between expenditures in the 16, 17 year and what's actually being budgeted. So I'm not sure if looking at other years might be beneficial too. I know it's a, it's a guessing game, but if we have an average that we're guessing 50,000 higher, then.
Yeah. And what's happened is we've seen a huge increase in hospitalizations and, and that's kind of where I am right now. When it comes to like different levels, last year, um, seemed to be elementary was a year that we had a lot of kids that, you know, that's what happened. And, and what happens there is, um, after 10 days of being hospitalized, we have to, um, provide tutoring in that facility. And some kids have gone to long-term tutoring situations. And that's what those funds are there for. We've had students that have been hit by cars. We've had students that have been in accidents, things like that. Those are things.
I mean, I realize that it's something that's unpredictable. It's just that if we're not predicting close for over a few years, then that's the question, I guess. It's more of what I'm having.
Hmm. Hmm. And I think that, I think that where we are with that, I think that we, we look at the sum of those accounts too, like, and what happens is there are multiple levels and sometimes the sum of those accounts bring us back to say, all right, we're within the ballpark with all three. And that's kind of what happens. But each one, sometimes they're off. Sometimes we spend more in elementary than we do there.
It's almost like when you're looking at, um, the tuition lines, you're looking at them and high school could be a million dollars out of district that, but you've only spent this year 700, but then another one could be middle school could be 800. What we try and do is lump them all together and make sure that the bottom line covers. Because sometimes the mix is exceedingly volatile, the way it goes as far as actuals go when you're tracking. And even, even, even this year, you know, uh, looking at first quarter numbers, first third numbers, they could be all over the place. But you're never really going to be certain until you close out and you realize that you have this disparity. But hopefully you've captured it all in the totality of those line items.
So just to, so I, I get, I get that. But if you look at the totality of all the tutor, tutor numbers, you're 37,000 higher than what you expended two years ago. So in total, in, in totality, there's a, there's a delta that I feel is significant enough to review. And if that, and I guess.
Absolutely. Definitely do that.
My question, I guess, like I said, it's going back. I, I think we're just kind of talking the same thing over, over here. So it's kind of just, if it's the same for years prior that were 30, $40,000 higher, that's my, if we're not, then it's just an abnormal, abnormal year where we're only, um, that year that we were able to get, be less, then obviously that's moot point. But.
See, and, and the thing with that line too, is I agree, we could look at that too, and not to go too deep into it. We've also done other things too where we're, we're doing a lot more, um, in our buildings too with, with providing for kids, you know, um, services, um, you know, um, that are, that are supporting them both after school sometimes too, and they're involved more curricular activities and they're doing a lot more things right now where we probably would have in the past. So it is something that I think is, is legitimate to look at to say, you know, is there, is there an overall decrease? And I think that we have, um, looked at that at the point of, as a ballpark, we said, with based on all the accounts, but I think that it is a, a good valid point to look at, Mike. So, uh, and your next question about.
I think Cindy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy. I apologize.
Well, it sounds like I agree with Mike. I mean, it sounds like, you know, it's something to look at closely, but I get that we have to probably budget for, we can't be, we can't be short of funds if all of a sudden there's unforeseen catastrophic things that happen that can really bump that, that up. But, you know, the question would be, where's the right balance? And is, is, is the right balance where we're at? Or is it, you know, bringing it in 20 grand or something like that? Um, so I, I agree. I think it is a good, good point.
Yep. It is a good point. Thank you. Um, and then the next question was around, um, placement of a lot of district schooling. Um, so again, um, Mike and I were able to have a conversation about this and I think that really helped me frame, um, kind of my, my response, uh, at the beginning of my presentation. Um, is there any further information? Mike, can you, around that?
No, and I'd like to thank you for taking the time to actually discuss that with me and also bring it forward to the board and actually explain that to the, not only the board, but the greater community. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. No, thank you for the question. Um, and then finally, um, Ms., uh, Board Member Schoenfeld had a question. Talking about the change in vendors, um, impromptu changes and why new vendors and most costly. Um, I think it's, um, I think I've, I've covered this and I think that really comes down to time availability of the vendors and the change with SARES is really the three main things that happened to us along there. Do you need any more information on that? All right. Thank you. And I believe those are all my questions. If there any further questions?
Any pop quizzes for John? Seeing none, I think we are set with questions for now. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions too. They were, uh, done.
You have your hands full, John. The laws alone. You should be your own lawyer, right? So we're going to move on to item number five, which is a formal hearing on the technology, library, media budget for 2018, 2019 with Director Nancy Rose. Well, Marcia has the cart, so I'm telling you, he's, he's one step away from a cart right now.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody. Um, I was going to start out with just a quick note. Uh, this budget is just a continuation of the provision of technology and library media services as well, uh, in support of teaching and learning as well as district operations. Um, the note on the front of the, or the narrative at the front of the budget talks about that we're going to look at adding more carts of laptops district-wide. Uh, we're going to focus on increasing Wi-Fi, which is sort of the second half of the plan we started last year or this current year. Um, I'm continuing to collaborate with, uh, the Office of Student Supports on the installation of sound field systems in classrooms. And then also just more infrastructure like cabling and, um, doing, we're looking at the paging systems, which in some of our buildings are very old. I don't know the years of installs, but I know that they're quite old. Um, I did want to make a very quick note before I got into the questions about typewriters. Um, we actually still use typewriters in the library office for spine labels. And we've been testing different, um, printers for laser printing labels, but what we find is that depending on what we get, they fade. And so we found actually that the culprit in one case was adhesive on the tape that we put over the label. So you never know what you're going to encounter and trusty old ink on typewriter ribbon, sometimes that's the best solution. Um, so I just, I couldn't resist that. But I just, when I challenged the, the staff, like, why are we still using it? And they're like, well, look at this one compared to this one. It's like, it's hard to argue with a label you can read and one you cannot. So we're working on it. Um, so, and then I'll just jump right into the questions that I received. Um, from Chairman Barnes, there was a question about, we're in the process of the Technology Capital Improvement Plan. Um, and when we got started, a lot of the planning was in response to some pretty substantial failures that we'd undergone, such as the phone system, but started in the high school, but the phone systems district-wide were quite old. Um, we had a Power School server that the need to replace it was emergent rather than planned. Um, and so the question was, where do we see the technology infrastructure from a stability standpoint? And I'm happy to say that I think that right now we're probably as stable as we've ever been. Um, we have the Power School and our Budget Sense data is backed up to the vendors and then we back up the server side locally. Um, and we're working on doing some off-site hosting of those backups. Uh, our phone system has been in place now for several years and we're working on redundancy and, and scattering services, both the, the service, the phone service that comes into the buildings as well as the servers that host that around the district as well as backup telephone, just plain old telephone or POTS lines, um, and working on improving the failover of the system as a whole, so that if it dies in one place, the other buildings can pick it up if we haven't lost district-wide connectivity. Um, we are using the cloud more and more for storage and email and our mail is almost entirely hosted online. We have what's called a hybrid environment. Um, I think our biggest challenge there is the staff support and training needed to make a transition from local storage to network or just cloud-based storage. Um, and we're continuing to increase how much we have virtualized in the server environment so that we have more of our servers live in a software state and we have it spread across more hardware. So we're less, um, prone to hardware failure issues. Uh, and that's an area that we're working on now and just kind of, especially we run a lot of small applications and so that would help with that. Um, one vulnerability that's something I'm going to be looking at in the future and talking with Matt about is that we do currently have one single internet service provider, which in a business world, you would normally have a backup and that's a cost. Um, and we have one wide area network, which is served by the same company. So when our internet service goes down, it goes down. And so that's something that can be explored in the future and, you know, we can just present the, the board and the town with plans and say, this is what it would cost if we wanted. But as we become more dependent on internet and internet-connected devices for instruction and assessment and operations, um, downtime becomes less and less of an option.
On that note, Nancy, um, we were talking about backup ISP and WAN. Um, is our provider consistent with what the town of Merrimack is using?
Uh, I don't think so right now. We switched over to a different provider last year, which I was going to talk about a little bit later in part of the CIP plan.
Won't steal your thunder. Okay.
Huh?
I won't steal your thunder.
But that would be an, you know, an opportunity to talk to the town and what is it that they're using? I think that they're on Comcast, which is what we went off of, um, last year. So do you know what the town's using?
I believe, I believe it is Comcast. They've, they've had.
Well, franchise fees, so I can see why they would.
Well, they've, they've had some issues too with, um, I'm getting Nixal alerts when the phone system is, is down. And usually you get those too. So it's definitely something that we, we need. I know we have our own Comcast connection in central office apart from the.
We have little standalone ones in, in a couple of the schools.
So if I have to do emergency messaging and I need the internet, I can do it off the wireless that we have as a backup for Comcast, even if our network is, is down, or I could go to Dunkin' Donuts or something like that. But usually, you know, in the office, we could, we could do that. But from a district standpoint, you're absolutely right to get some sort of redundancy because we're so dependent upon it right now. It's, uh, it would be definitely something terrific to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, coming soon. Um, and then your second question was a question about implementation of new technologies. Where do we see our bandwidth? So actually that's the place where I was going to talk about First Light. Currently, I think our bandwidth is sufficient, but as we continue to add mobile devices and use them more and more throughout the day, we are probably going to need to increase that. And I'm probably going to be looking to do that in 2018 in the summer. Um, what's interesting is that when we went from, uh, Comcast to First Light, we entered into an agreement where we are, I don't know what we would call it. It's like, it's not a mortgage, but we, we built out the fiber build, lease-to-own of our fiber for three years for the wide area network that services Reed's Ferry and Thornton's Ferry. And then when that is done, we'll switch over and do the same agreement to get fiber built out to the middle school. So that in six years, the fiber will essentially be Merrimack property. And then at that point, we could convert it to dark fiber and manage it on our own, which has its own costs and issues. However, we also could just switch to a managed service of the fiber itself and the cost for the service would drop, continue to drop. So, and the, the cost of this new service is cheaper than what we were paying. So it's, it's been a savings plus it's an increased savings as we go, if that makes sense. So as we add bandwidth, we're actually now at more bandwidth at a lower cost than we were before. So we're better.
Yeah. If I can add a little history, this is something that. Yeah, if I can add a little history, this is something that, when the town had its Cable TV Committee going through, when Pam Tinker was here, and Pam was on the Cable TV Committee, and I visited them a few times, we were trying to get the town to string fiber to our outlying facilities, and it just, it just never came to fruition. So this was the only way that we knew how to do it and do it on our own. So Nancy took the bull by the horns that there would need it to have to be done, which is definitely imperative, and in the long run, it's going to, it's going to serve us well to have our own fiber runs.
Yeah. And, and just for information, the complex, the MEAC and Muse complex is dark fiber that we own already. And that's been, that is the only thing that got done, I think, is part of that.
Yeah, well, that was done by Adelphia years ago.
Oh, okay.
And we had to go hunting for it. When I first started working here, we didn't know where it terminated in the building. And we found a gentleman who worked for Adelphia years ago and remembers where it was. And we told him, come on down if you can. And he showed us where they terminated in the high school and in the library is where it terminated.
At Muse.
Yeah, there's a big coil in the ceiling, so you don't want to hear my old stories, do you? So I'll just be quiet.
I worked for Adelphia at that time, so my guess is it was Tom Reed, but...
Well, and the sad news is that that got cut, that wire got cut, so we had to replace it this last year, so.
It's not the company, it's fine.
No, that's not the company's fault, that's the streets of nature.
No, I was just saying, Adelphia doesn't exist anymore.
So those were the two questions that, that you had, Chairman Barnes, were those okay? Moving on to Board Member Guayumi. The first question you asked was about books, and it was a question about the increase over the current year and referring, and whether, what I talked about in the budget message. The book budget was cut in the 1617 budget, so that would have been last year's budget. And this current year, we're back to where we were. And the amount that we get, I, we distribute that among the six schools, but I kind of, when I divide money up between the schools, I do it in roughly three chunks. I do one for the high school, a chunk for the middle and the upper, and then a chunk for the elementaries. And it roughly breaks out to about the same student population in the three chunks. And the library book budget supports teaching and learning in the classrooms, it supports nonfiction, fiction, pleasure reading, and we also, it's probably worth noting, have hired three new librarians in the last two years. So we have new perspectives in the district. We're working on cleaning up the collection and adding materials and updating materials. And then as the curriculums shift, we adjust materials to meet that need, so. So it's, it's busy. And the other thing is, we do purchase a lot of eBooks. So when I'm buying eBooks, I leave those in the book budget, because those are materials that we own. So even if, like with a subscription, if I end a subscription to a database, we lose access to the database. But if I've purchased eBooks, I can keep, I can keep hosting those, and those stay, and they're ours. So I do leave those in the book budget, because they're, they're digital entities. So does that answer what you're asking about that? The next question from you was the additional equipment question about how, what this is and how it supports flexible learning environments. And additional equipment is the account that I use for the instructional equipment in classrooms that goes beyond the computer and the projector. So this is things like document cameras, interactive tools, like our MIMIO Teachbars. In other districts, they use smart boards. We do that with a board that adheres to the, and it makes a whiteboard into an interactive board. Apple TVs and iPads, clicker-response systems. We've been doing things with, beginning to use things like Osmo at the elementary level, snap circuits for teaching circuitry, just different kinds of learning tools. It allows for learning centers, to set up different centers in a classroom, so that creates some flexibility. A lot of times, with the technology for instruction, the teachers let the students use that. So it's not just a teacher standing, it's the kids up and interacting and working with the technology. And the other thing I think is important to note, because I'll talk about this a little bit later, a lot of the times, this equipment, this is a line that has been growing a little bit, but it has always stayed at kind of this, this level. The, some of this equipment gets shared, and so one of the things I hear is that, like a PLT will want to have access to something, and we don't necessarily have enough to go around, or a team is sharing something at the middle school. So this is an area that, it adds the enhancement to education beyond just plain computer and projector, but it's probably the area where we have the most growth to go. But, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. And then you had a question about the Capital Improvement Plan, about the STEM education line. Lo and behold, this is where I was going to talk about that. And the question was about that line in the CIP about increasing access to STEM learning opportunities, and it's the beginning of funding specifically targeted, targeted to address STEM learning opportunities. You were asking more about the overall plan. This is essentially a line that's in response to some of the work that I've been doing with FIRST and trying to get the robotics programs into all of the schools, rather than into a handful of schools. This is also, getting back to that additional equipment line, some of the technology that students are, and teachers are using are more like the robots, the dash-and-dot robots, iPads to support that. They're starting to do application development at the middle school, and they'd like to get a handful of Android devices. We'd like to do Google Expeditions and Make360 videos. There's a lot of these things that are very hands-on STEM kinds of technology, science, engineering, and math opportunities, but we just don't have that much to go around. And so as interest is generated, and you get one teacher that really takes it by the horns, pretty soon, the interest generates faster than the access to the devices. And so, and that goes back to the additional equipment, but it's probably more specialized than simply a document camera. And this is looking at long-term, trying to do more with things like FIRST and bring it into the district. So we were able to provide the high school get-set program with an EV3 set for the FIRST program. They opted not to compete, but they have been working with building a robot and doing some programming, and they use that for problem-solving and life-skill training. I would like to see more of that in the school, rather than, and I think it was Board Member Schneider at a previous meeting, in the summer meeting, I think, where we talked about wanting more of these opportunities in the day, rather than as an after-school club for those kids who have the ability to stay. And there's more and more competitions and programs and opportunities that come along, but if you don't have the equipment, you don't have a way to get involved and to participate in those. And the other point, it's more relevant for this current year, is that we applied for a first round, which we didn't get, but then a second round from the DOE for robotics development in the school district. And we've heard that we've gotten something, I don't know how much of the grant that we will have received, but those kinds of opportunities help offset, and I want to just continue to build on that. Does that answer that question? Okay.
And I think you did not get Andy's question earlier. So you jumped straight to Sid from my question, so Andy had a question on non-technology-type stuff, so we'll go old-school and talk about binding.
I'm not done.
Oh, I'm nervous, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just, those were just Cindy's questions.
Right, no, but it was me, then Andy, then Cindy, so you skipped over Andy's page in our packets.
Oh, you know what? I, I'm working on my own, I didn't get the grid, I had done mine before I got the grid. I didn't change my order. I apologize.
No worries, no worries. As long as you have the question, that was my concern.
I have all of them. Yeah, I did, I just, I had them in the order that I got them.
Okay.
So, sorry.
Well, sometimes...
But mine's got a nice grid, too. I want you to see my Excel skills.
Very good.
So I can go to Andy's and skip over.
Don't have to, it's totally fine.
I will, just don't let me forget to go back. So Andy's question, Board Member Schneider, was about binding, and this was an item that was cut a couple of years ago, and we brought it back for this year, and whether the year-to-date spending on binding will utilize the budget or be more or less than utilized, and just information about that as a line item. This is an item that we typically spend what we have, and so we decide what we're binding based on how much money we have, and we turn away things. It's not that we're turning away scads and scads of books, but it's more part of the decision-making, is if we can bind things that are harder to get, or that we know, some publishers just publish materials that fall apart faster. So if we know that we can bind it and it'll last longer than if we buy another copy, we would choose to do that, but if we don't have money in the binding budget, then we may opt to buy. Sometimes you just simply can't get stuff, especially some of the high-interest, kind of like movie-based things at the elementary level, that's very, very popular, but a flash in the pan. The interest in it doesn't go away, but you can't always get replacements. So, but that's an area that, you know, when we're looking at cuts and stuff, it does tend to go by the wayside quicker. Michael?
So you just brought up an interesting topic there. So if you can't bind it, then you go out and buy it?
It depends on the, the book, the quality of, the condition of the book.
Yeah.
Because if the book is in really terrible shape, there's no point to bind it. Frequently, some publishers, with the binding, the pages are completely fine, but they fall apart, the, the binding itself falls apart.
I think what your comment, I think your comment was that if you don't have the money in the binding budget, then you go out and buy the book.
If, if, yeah, if we don't, like, with the year that we didn't have a binding budget, but if we could get, like, a high-interest Star Wars, the cross-section books, which fall apart very readily, we would just get more of them.
Is it usually cheaper to bind the book than it is to buy it?
It depends on, it depends on the binding, and it depends, like, a really big book can be expensive to bind, but a bound, a rebound one with a slipcover over the front lasts a lot longer.
Okay. So I guess my question would be, is, would it be better to have, because I guess the thing is, why wouldn't that money be able to be shifted? Is that because the line item has a certain amount of money, and you can't shift one line item to another? Is that correct, Matt?
You can only expend it if you're expensive.
You can, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, so just, I guess in the future, if you're at that scenario where you're out of money for binding, maybe overex...
So I was just going to offer a perspective, because this reminds me of the conversations we had several years ago about why, why in the HE double hockey sticks do we have so much in terms of binding? And it, it's so variable. When we removed it, they were caught in a bit of a pickle, because there were books that they couldn't get anywhere else, that couldn't be rebounded. So you're right, there's some cases you can buy a book cheaper than maybe rebinding it, but there's a whole category of books that you just can't get anymore, that you need to rebind, you know, either whether it's a classroom book, or a special one in the library, or whatever. So by reintroducing the rebind, the binding bu, binding budget, I've mostly tested to see, is it worth keeping it back in? Is it part of a normal routine? Or do we find we're just going to buy the books and therefore we don't need it at all?
Yeah, and I think what I'm arguing is that it should either, A, be a little bit more robust based off of the comment, or it should always stay...
That's why I asked whether it was over or under, to find out whether we needed to adjust the amount for bindings.
Thank you.
And it sounds crazy that when you rebind a book, it's in better shape than when you bought the book.
If the pages are in good shape. It's, it's a judgment call as you go. And that's the thing, the staff in my office are very good at assessing. And there's just some publishers that we just know that the pages themselves are fantastic, they're like glossy, nice pages, but the way that they put them together falls apart. And so it's unfortunate, but it's the nature of the beast, so.
Excellent.
Okay?
Well, thank you.
So I'm not sure who you guys have next. What's your next, is it Thompson or...
I think it's Mike, actually.
Okay.
Mike and then Naomi.
So, Mike had a question, and the question was about the software account and the fact that it's increasing at a large rate, and you were interested in more details, and I decided that it would just make more sense to just talk about it here, to answer what is going on with that account. This account, and Board Member Schoenfeld also has questions about it, so I'll talk about it in both contexts. I think one of the bigger areas that accounts for this going up is that we cover a lot of backend systems, so that includes things like our enterprise-wide wireless management. And so this year, I actually worked on a project to co-terminate the, the licensing for the management of our access points, which we have several hundred now in the district, and we will have several hundred more next year when we increase that, or not several hundred more, but we'll probably have about 80 more. And managing those licenses was becoming such a headache that we just did a three-year across-the-board lump payment to get that done, so that they all co-terminate. And things like that are kind of unpredictable, but that's one of the reasons that, that this line is affected. We're also, we have more mobile devices, so the management of those devices has a per-unit cost. We are paying for content filtering, as well as spam filtering, endpoint security, or virus protection. We are doing fairly complex asset management now, and that's actually something that John and I have been working collaboratively on, to help track devices that are purchased for special ed, with grant funding, and to make sure we know who has what. And then also network optimization. All of this traffic requires some load balancing and some work to make sure that we're optimized for what we need. We're paying for local storage systems and the licensing that goes with that, as well as backup systems. And then we're adding software packages for curricular, but also productivity needs. So it just seems like, for everything that we do, there's software that goes with it. And then as we add devices, the devices themselves have more licenses, and then on top of all of the additional things is the cost increases by the different providers for things. And this also covers the library databases, instructional technology, our office, and Windows licensing, it's fairly involved. And actually, I will just jump over to Board Member Schoenfelder's software question, which was, the ink, the $10,000 increase is a, it costs for software licenses, and how much is new software, and what are those needs that are being addressed? So part of the jump is that we had the cut in the previous year from the deferment, and then we were building, rebuilding that. We cut some library media services when we did that, so we rebuilt that. But we are also working on different systems to support differentiated instruction. I've had a lot of meetings this year with the building administrators, language arts coordinators, and discussions about how they're using the technology and licensing for writing programs and reading programs. It's now part of the math program, a lot of what Marcia was just talking about with the Muse budget. There's, there's so many applications, and frequently, you have to license them in order to be able to retain the data if you want. So there's, what they call it freemium, so you can use a product for free, but if you want to maintain or track data that you record, so if a student is doing some kind of an online formative assessment, if you don't pay for it, you lose those results. So you lose the value of that information over time. And then the additional areas are, we just did the refresh for the K-6 labs, and so they're looking at different things that they can, now that those computers are Windows and have a lot more capability, they have interest in doing more things with coding and STEAM, our STEM activities there. 3D design, it's just, it's kind of across the board, and there are a lot of small things, but they, they add up. So that's kind of like the twofold approach. It's a lot of backend, annual cost increases. And then the other thing that makes it complicated is that most of the backend systems are for two- to three- or four-year agreements, because you get a much better deal. And so we may not pay something one year, but it rarely goes down, so. So I don't know if that answers that? It's a, it's a, it's a big bucket, it catches a lot, that, that account. So I will go back to the beginning of Board Member Schoenfeld's questions. You asked about the current ratio of student devices, students to device, and what's optimal and why. Our current range of mobile devices, so laptops, is roughly, it ranges between four and a half to nine students to device, depending, it's, like, at the high schools, the highest ratio, worst ratio, I should say. If we incorporate labs into that count, so computer labs where they go to the lab, that drops a little bit, it goes to about three to six, ranges from three to six, so three devices to six, excuse me, to device, students per device. I think current standard practice is one-to-one, it's what we hear about, and I think that the reason it is optimal is that, first and foremost, from my perspective, a dedicated device is easier to support than a device that supports multiple logins, multiple users, has to be turned in, cleaned up, has to be dealt with between, transferring between different users and classrooms. It takes more time, more support. It standardizes us on larger types of equipment, so we have less variety and theme, which we have more of right now. We're spending less time moving around and dealing with just the movement of devices. And then I think a big one that's important to note is that it, when you dedicate a device to a student, it develops a sense of ownership and responsibility. So if I know that this laptop is my laptop, then I'm less likely to vandalize it. One of the common problems that we see, and I'm surprised I still see it at the high school, but we do, they pick the keys. And the manufacturers have developed the pickless keyboard, and it is not true. They can get those keys off. So if anybody... keyboard and it is not true. They can't get those keys off. Um, so if anybody that sees this meeting or has children that pick keys, talk to them. Um, and then also if it's a sing, it's a single student, single device, it's easier to track dan- damage. You know, if the same laptop or same student's laptop keeps getting broken, there's a pattern. A subtle laptops that moves around in a cart through several days before anybody in the tech department sees it, there's no way to know what's happened or how or when or why. Um, and then I think the biggest issue about why it's optimal, and this is one that I think is critical, is that in those discussions I have with the different buildings and the, the teachers, frequently teachers are planning two lessons because they plan a lesson when they want to use technology, but they can't rely on having access. And so they are then planning the backup. And I know that's highly frustrating and I don't know what to do because if a need comes along to, that they don't get it the day that they're planning the lesson, a snow day throws the calendar off, a need for assessments comes along, you know, whatever it is, they are frequently at a loss. And so that to me is the biggest issue. The demand, I would venture that Marge and, and Matt could back this up. The demand for devices is skyrocketing. So we're, I'm hoping based on this budget to add 12 carts of laptops this year. And they're scattered across the district to seek to reduce ratios. If I can do that, I actually calculated it out. Um, if I can do that, it'll reduce our, it'll change the range from three to, three divi- three students to device up to six, and it would reduce it between 3.1 and, um, the highest would be 4.9. Um, so it would actually greatly improve at the middle and high school level, the, the profile that we have. Um, but still, the demand and the requests is very high. The need is ongoing. The assessments are all online now. Science is online now this year for the first time. Um, so it is, it is a constant, constant issue. So, you know, I think that, uh, when I first got here, when we had $0 for budgeting for technology and it was sort of a justify why you get the luxury of technology, it is now so part of the fabric of what we do every day. So, yes?
Is there been any consideration of student-owned devices that they're bringing into school to be able to access any of the software that is provided to the classrooms, uh, through like a Citrix type of model or anything like that?
Not through a Citrix model. Just tend to not-
Like a cloud-based, whatever?
I've, I've got colleagues in other districts that have done different kinds of things like that or key serving or different ways to try to do it. And I think it becomes more of a headache to manage, especially with the size of our staff. Um, students are able to bring in laptops. They have access to a student, uh, student network. They can get onto 365. They can get onto Power School. They can get into Power School Learning, which is where the bulk of most of what they're using, they can get to. Um, so, and we, they have, they have access to the network and probably most kids have at least two devices on them a lot of the time, um, which is another one of our challenges. So.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure if there was like, with the capability of cloud-based software solutions now, you know, obviously web-based logins and stuff like that give the access to wherever you are. So I wasn't sure with that kind of, of move towards more of that type of software, if obviously student-owned devices actually helps to free up some of the needs for some of the other stuff.
At this point where the, the devices that we're purchasing for student use are in the $250 range, um, we're, I think we're better off managing the, the environment the way that we currently do because we, it, my concern about an environment like that, it would be a huge learning curve and you have to do a big investment in the core system to then outlay and you're still buying a $200 device for, to be used for the students that don't have devices. And then there's the equity issue. Um, so it, I know that that's, it's a model that gets used, but, uh, I've known a couple of districts that have looked at it and it's just, it's, it's, it's a model that I'm, we can obviously look into it, but it, it's challenging for a district our size as well as for the staff that we have. So.
Are you talking, can I ask a, a question? You talking about the bring your own device type model? Or kids who have devices?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just thinking, we're, we're focused on, obviously more technology is better. If students have their own device, you know, a laptop or whatever they're bringing to school, cause they're taking notes, they're being more efficient using Office 365. But what I'm thinking is that more and more software is online-based. So if most of our software becomes online-based, then all they need is web access. You don't need to manage the device. You need to manage the software itself. So instead of investing maybe more on technology at this point, if we actually possibly invest more in scene applications, and it might just not be feasible based off the technology that's out there for schools. But if we look at the software available that's more web-based, then if a student does bring the device, that's one less device that we need to go with.
They currently have that. 365 access, Power School Learning, Power School, that's all online.
But basically what's happening, if I can just clarify, is there are kids that will bring their own laptops and they can use them in class and they do.
They do.
So that kind of already exists, but you can't rely on that as the way that you're going to deliver the technological lesson.
And the other part of it is the support for when they are using something in the classroom, making sure that you've got consistency across the board. So a classroom teacher with 25 to 30 kids in a classroom, trying to deliver a lesson where multiple kids have multiple, multiple different devices that we don't support, then we have issues of if somebody can't connect, we're looking at something that's not our device. And that's the support and that's the end of things that becomes, the small problem that becomes a bigger issue. It's just kind of creating an economy of scale and standardizing on something.
Forty-five minutes of tech support and no lesson plan.
Exactly.
Exactly. Andy?
The other issue that we run into in business stuff is you bring all these devices, you create the potential for infection and viruses and things like that, depending on how they're used. So other districts that, so my wife's into technology and the district research that they've done, found that doing something that's web-based, like Chromebooks or something along those lines, at least you have control over what the devices are and you have more control over the infecting and viruses and things. Whereas everybody brings their own laptop in and starts getting more involved with it. You increase the risk to the district overall. And even if you have a standard, like everybody runs a Norton, you get a site wide Norton, it's still, it's still risky there too. So there's, there's pros and cons all over the place.
Yeah.
So, and I had a question based on your commentary about cows. And how much are the carts on wheels? So how much are they? And, and would it be cheaper to get more laptops than cows?
Well, they're laptops in carts.
So you get, it's a package?
Well, you, you put it together. It's about 30 laptops. So it's a class set.
Right. So I guess the question is, if we did, didn't get the cows and we just got the laptops and had-
Oh, you mean the cart itself?
Yes.
The carts themselves are between $900 and $1,200, depending on how much functionality they have.
Three or four, or maybe four or five laptops tops out of it.
Yeah.
Right. Then it becomes harder to move.
Right. I'm just saying, but then you could like backfill more classrooms and just keep them there.
And at the lower levels, you would want to do that regardless, just for safety of, of the devices.
Fair enough.
So, so.
Okay.
Um, and then another question you asked about books. We talked about books. No, we didn't. We didn't talk about your question about books, which was, um, just the level, the $40,000 amount that the book budget is. And that's because it's divided up between the six schools and we break it into three chunks to support the K-6, the K-4 schools, pre-K-4 schools, five, six, seven, eight, and then the high school. Um, and one of the things that I think is interesting is we're constantly weeding the collection, trying to maximize the space that we have. And by the time you work through all of the subject areas on kind of a multi-year basis and refresh the collection, it's kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, uh, especially in nonfiction and reference. Um, we're just constantly reviewing. It, it's just an ongoing process and we need the funding to keep that up to date. Um, the priority is always what supports direct instruction. So it's subject matter, what they're covering in the curriculum, what the projects are going to be. Um, sometimes it's responsive to new ideas in the, during the school year. But, um, so the year that we cut that back, uh, a couple of years ago, the hit was on popular, uh, interest, high-interest reading series that the kids look forward to. And it's sad, but it's, it's one of the impacts. Um, the circulation in the libraries is quite high and those kinds of materials are the ones that, that we circulate the most. Um, so that's why it is what it is. And, but it also does reflect a fair number of eBooks. So that isn't only physical items. And then you asked about the increase in funding distributed across the, um, categories in the capital improvement plan. The areas of increase are cabling. We're working on leveraging E-rate funding, which is a federal funding to support cabling and other infrastructure in, um, school, public schools and libraries. And we, as part of the Voight project, we were able to do, uh, the entirety of Reed's Ferry and part of Thornton's Ferry. This last year, we leveraged the funding to do the entirety of, uh, Master Cola Elementary School and a little bit of the upper elementary. So we would need to focus on more of the upper elementary and the high school. And I'd like to complete the Thornton's Ferry other half in the future years. I think I've got four more years in which to work with that funding. Um, and then if we need to add at the middle school, the cabling person edit that is in the middle school is fine. It's just if we need to add capacity there. Um, and as we're adding access points, I use that. Um, and the other, another area there is what I mentioned earlier, increasing the wireless access. So this last year, we added APs and moved APs to try to get every other classroom. So I'd like to be able to get as many of every classroom as we can, um, to get as close to one access point per classroom. Uh, and then we also have been like, when we buy a cart, we tend to put an access point right on the cart, just to make sure that we have the coverage that we need to make sure that a set of 30 laptops functions. Um, and then a big part of that amount is the addition of the 12 carts distributed across the schools. And then the STEM is a new line item this year. And then, uh, we're starting to look at paging systems. This is an area, these are systems that work wonderfully until they don't. Um, so we've started to have more frequent, you know, modules and components breaking in them. The high school one we had to do this year, we weren't planning on it and it ended up needing to be done. Um, and we've been kind of repairing some of the older ones at the other schools and they are all, I don't know, Matt might know, but they go back. I think the middle schools is the newest and it's with the school. Um, and they're, they're not terribly exciting, but when they don't work, they're a problem. So, so we're working on, just starting to work on those. Uh, and then I also wanted to just touch on, you had the question for the Muse, like, uh, school about the leveled library. And, um, one of the things that you might want to know is that the, most of the schools leveled library books, that school's all of their leveled library books. And I know EMS and Thornton's Ferry are all in the library system. They're categorized in a way that they can be found. And so that's one of the ways that they track it. Um, but it's also nice because if a student is looking for a book that's checked out, but we know that it's in the leveled library and not being used, they'll talk to each other and agree to let kids have access to it. Um, and then they'll pull things out of the library system if they need to supplement a class set. So, um, when we first did it, it was kind of a crossing of two boundaries that had never been breached. But, uh, it's been a very collaborative process. Um, it's, it's just, I think it's been a very good thing. And we can actually run reports for them out of the library system. And it's actually very informative. So, um, it's been very good. I think that was all of my questions. I had one more thing that I did, I wanted to touch upon. It isn't directly in my budget, but there is a, a request in, um, the central office budget to put an additional technician position in this year or next year. Um, and I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. We currently support, um, while we're at 3,800 students and 5, 500 staff that we support with two technicians and a network administrator. Um, the device count is well over 2,000 and that's not including printers. Um, and so we're maxed out on how much we support and we're looking at adding. And the criticality of the technology being used has just increased. It isn't just nice to have, it's need to have. And the usage is more complex. So instructional technology in a classroom now is very interconnected. There's software involved. There's different components and cables and connectors. Um, so we just need help to, to, to be able to manage and keep everything running as effectively as we can. Um, and another area I'm hoping to be able to do with a, an additional technician would be to stagger their work hour. So they start during the school day, but stay after the school day so that work can be done on, especially on high-traffic areas and, and like labs and carts that are used heavily during the evening hours when they're not in use. And then also to have this person hopefully be able to do, um, more of the troubleshooting and support for our AV systems. Um, getting really good AV troubleshooting and repair has been one of our big challenges in the last couple of years. Um, and none of it's rocket science. It's just things that my staff don't necessarily currently know how to do or have time to do. Um, so the demand for the position is, is ongoing. And, you know, people constantly say, you know, we, the technicians that we have are fabulous and we're very, very fortunate, but they're not always available. Um, so, so I just wanted to, to state that and make that case. So.
Michael?
I just wanted to say that I was, um, I was, I was happy to see that additional staff was actually requested. Cause I, I think I stated this in years prior. I think that what your staff does is an amazing job with the number of units and people that they're supporting and have been very impressed with the lack of staff actually compared to the number of units. So, um, based off the history of working with companies and seeing their size of their IT staff compared to the number of units and, and, uh, technology that you're taking care of, I think that it's, it's, it's a needed resource. So.
Thank you.
The only disappointment I had in your presentation is I set you up well to say you had to milk the cows and you didn't do it. So.
I wasn't gonna go there. You know, I'm from Nebraska, so that hits a little close to home. So, so that's all I had.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Nancy? Seeing done. Thank you very much for thorough presentation.
Yeah. And have a good night.
You too. Enjoy. Sorry. Easier said than done. Staying warm. So we are on to item number six, which is the dissemination of the proposed New Hampshire School Boards Association resolutions. Uh, so we have coming up the delegate assembly on January 20th. And Naomi is our delegate and we have Cindy assigned as our alternate. Um, something that has come up, just to make you aware, is, uh, the first vice president would normally take the role of president in 2018. Uh, she would be up for reelection and Marge has decided not to run. So at the delegate assembly, I will be installed as the New Hampshire president, uh, in a couple of weeks. So no, no surprises when you get there. I'll let you know how that goes. Sometimes be careful what you wish for, right? Um, but, uh, so that's coming up. Um, in your packets, you do have the platform in which we're going to be voting. Uh, the way the voting works is obviously if it's a continuing resolution, we vote on the platform unless something needs to be taken out for, for consideration. Um, and then there are the petitions resolutions, which we actually did one last year that got not only, um, accepted as written, but used in practice, um, at the State House. So something that we can be very proud of. On that note, um, if there are any questions about what's the proposed resolutions, the way they'll be voted upon will be, um, that we would recommend the vote of the, of the Board of Directors. So not the petition itself, but usually sometimes it's alternate language. Sometimes it's not recommended and sometimes it's recommended, um, recommended as written. So, um, and that would all be based on the recommendation of the Board of Directors. So if there's any, uh, questions or, um, position that this board would have alternate to that position, we'll want to discuss it before, um, the delegate assembly. So we, we need to bring it up in our next meeting. So we'll just have a quick, um, discussion point on our agenda. If anything does come up. If not, in the last couple of years, I think it was all about our resolution, uh, last year, but nothing has come up as, as terribly, um, in question. So, um, if there's any questions in the meantime, obviously you have a ringer on the board. I'd be glad to talk to you about any questions you have. Onto item number seven, which is the request to withdraw $225,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund for emergency repairs for the mitigation of BAT residue. And I'll turn the mic over to Matt.
Thank you. As we've spoken about, um, a few meetings here, and, uh, I've been posting online and on our Facebook page and to get the information out to, to everybody. Uh, we're in the process of taking care of the, the BAT issue at James Master Cola Upper Elementary School. Uh, I had mentioned that the total cost of the project would be around $600,000. Uh, let me, for the purposes of this meeting, break that down for you. The teardown and the re-bricking of the masonry using all-new brick, everything is, that's there is, is all tainted and it's going to be thrown away and disposed of. Uh, so that cost is $312,000. So that cost is $323,000. So all the teardown of the exterior block, and then the rebuilding of the exterior block with new brick that's being fabricated right now, that's around $323,000. Yes.
Does that include the insulation that was in between? Because the way you described it is, you pulled down the outside brick, then there was a layer of insulation, then the cinder block.
Yes.
And then you had to, they had to re-treat the cinder block, put the insulation back, and then the brick.
That, that figure right there includes the insulation. They will put the insulation, the bat remediation company, Critter Control, they went and after they sanitized everything, they went and they painted the block with a non-anti-fungal, anti-spore paint. And so now it's up to the masons to do the insulation. They have to straighten out the metal rods that were sticking from the brick in order to lay the brick on there. And so then they'll put the brick back up and then put the building back together. So that includes insulation, it includes the teardown of everything, and it includes the insulation and then rebuilding of the brick. That's the price for $323,000. The remediation process that was done by Critter Control of Merrimack, New Hampshire, where they work, they work hand-in-hand with the masons on this, because the masons would do the teardown while the Critter Control people would be vacuuming up and cleaning off the bat feces. So they were both, both trades were in the Tyvek's suits with respirators on, working. But their portion is $210,000. And we have around $30,000 in testing that we plan on doing. Leaves around $563,000. But we still don't know the cost of removing all the unit ventilators that were in the classrooms. We had to take those out because that was a particularly nice and cozy spot for the bats to hang out in. And so those all came out, Honeywell did that, so everything could be cleaned up. And everything's taped off, and those are going to have to be cleaned by Honeywell and the filters and everything like that, and put back on the building. So that's an added cost. So that's why, you know, our estimate right now is $600,000, and we'll probably come very close to that. And the Capital Reserve Fund that we had set up years ago, there's a total of $225,000 available between what's in the reserve fund now and what can go to the reserve fund out of this year's operating budget, now that we've completed the audit of '16, '17, and we've set the tax rate and we're sure of what our surplus is. So that would leave us with around $4,000 left in that fund. So we'd like your authorization, it does not have to be tonight, but we'd like your consideration to withdraw up to $225,000 for the Emergency Capital Reserve Fund for that specific purpose of the remediation of the bat issue at the upper elementary school.
Andy?
I'd like to ask an additional question, because you've done a good job of itemizing the costs. I know that there have been some discussions about whether, whether the reconstruction or the teardown, actually, anything was put out to bid, the economies of scale. So if you could talk a little bit about sort of how we got into this, and how the teardown occurred, and then why you chose the method to use the same vendor to put things back up, what the costs and stuff are, so people, especially listening at home, can understand sort of the overall process here.
Well, this was not something that we had known the scope of immediately. If it would have been a job and we knew the scope, okay, tear down 120 linear feet of brick, remove insulation, building is two-story high, figure out how many square you need, you know, this is our specification, work with, you know, remediation company, et cetera, and we could have drawn out a spec, we could have gone out to bid for that. But this was one of a, an issue that evolved over the period of a couple of weeks, where we drilled and carved in several test areas to see, are we done? Is this area clear yet, or isn't it not clear? So we were working with the masonry contractor who provided all the scaffolding, had to go to Massachusetts and Rhode Island to pick up so much scaffolding to wrap around that building, and is still carrying that cost, that to try and go out to bid for the reconstruction of the brick that's there right now would require him taking all his scaffolding that wraps around that entire building, and then going out to bid, which would mean you would carry the cost of another company to bring that scaffolding in that's three stories high, that is not cheap, and put that up, and then try and get a company to match the brick, because we ordered the brick around three or four weeks ago. So you're probably looking at spring, late spring, before the job got done, because now you have to allow at least 30 days. So by him already having a scaffolding there for the teardown, and having the remediation company using that scaffolding, there's some economies of scale that was definitely realized by the two of them working together. And to have the company that remove all the brick, take down all that scaffolding, write a new specification, put it out to bid, and then get somebody else in, at this point in time, it's going to recreate everything, is, number one, it's going to cost more, and number two, it's not going to get done in a timely fashion at all. So we'd be going through the entire winter with those rooms probably not, not available, because they're not going to be available till all the brick is up, all the unit ventilators are put back, and everything is tested out. So we're still aiming for, you know, mid-February, but with bid, you'd spend more money and you would have the whole project delayed by at least a month, month and a half, easy. The kids wouldn't be in those areas.
So Matt, here's another question. Does it end up having the project, even as it is now, knowing that you're being very, as efficient as humanly possible, does that cost us in utilities because it's an uninsulated wall to a building?
I think the cost is negligible. Everything is all sealed off in that area. And I'm not sure about the points and how they can program the heating. They're obviously keeping it heated because of the extreme cold, but all the windows are boarded up, and I don't think it's specifically going to cost us that much more to keep the building up to temperature, even though it doesn't have the insulation in the brick.
Or the brick that would normally absorb heat from the sun.
Brick would normally absorb heat, yeah, yeah.
Those are the questions, yeah, that came to mind for me.
Yeah.
I actually had a question for you, based on these discussions. Has the district office gotten any questions about this? From anyone but the press? I understand the press.
Yeah, aside from the interviews that we did, and the press was, was very good to us, no, we haven't received any questions whatsoever.
So basically, this is social media chatter?
From what I understand, I have not seen it, but it has come to me secondhand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because obviously, if it's something of pressing issue, we definitely want to make sure that there's productive correspondence.
If anybody has any questions, I would encourage you to give me a call, 424-6200.
Excellent. Thank you. Cindy?
My question is, about after, is all fixed and repaired, because some of those bats, most of them, right, have flown other places for the winter and whatnot.
They're all gone. It was a colony of maybe 200 bats, we estimate, that has been there for a few years. So the good thing is when you have a colony, they go south in the summer. If you've got four or five, they'll hang around. That's why we found two bats there, and we relocated them. But it was a colony, 200 at least, probably, and they all flew. So right now, that area has no bats in it.
So they, they could fly back and then start looking for a place close by.
If we don't close this up before the spring hits and the bats return, that could indeed be a possibility.
But they could be looking for other places in that vicinity, so like the high school, for example, or, or other parts of the building that might.
Right.
So we'll be, what, keeping a close eye on it, or what does Critter Control say about that?
Yeah, we want to have, we want to have Critter Control go around and do a perimeter of our entire buildings. We've had them in the past do this, but it's time, it's probably time to do that again. So they will be looking for another home. They'll get to the home, the keys won't fit in the lock, and they'll realize, oh, okay, well, now we have to go someplace else. So we're definitely going to be carrying that cost, too, in the $600,000 to have in the Master Cola area, have Jesse from Critter Control go around and see if there's any other areas that we need to address before the bats come back in the spring or summer, whenever they come back. No vacancy sign will be up for bats.
Bat hotels somewhere.
Or perhaps, you know, we could involve the high school in building bat houses out in the, you know, the area, because they are important to us. Without bats, there'd be so many mosquitoes around.
Look them on the Bedford side of the Merrimack line.
They have a great.
We could do that, yes.
They have a great purpose, just not in our building.
Yeah, they do, yes.
I'll actually bring up the Parks and Rec meeting, because I know that some of the boys, the scouts that are looking to get their, become an Eagle Scout, are looking for actual things to do for the community. So I'll actually bring it up to provide that as possibly an option.
That would be a tremendous option, yes. Yeah. Yeah, maybe we could borrow some plans from community development and look at a, you know, kind of a high-rise condo for them, you know?
Like 280?
Two, 280 units, yes. That'd be nice.
With a lot of traffic.
With a lot of traffic, yes.
Goodness. We're having a moment. Andy, good luck.
Yeah, right. That's another meeting, I think, in this building, I think. You know, I think that regardless of what we've just discussed, I think that we need to be able to authorize the administration to pay the bills when they come in. And I think that, while I know that there is still an outstanding request into the State Department of Education to see if we can get some relief financially for this activity, I still think it behooves us to, as a school board, to authorize the district to have access to the emergency fund, to pay, to pay the vendors, you know, even if the DOE covers all of it. I mean, I don't think they will, but if they did, all we are is authorizing them to pull it should they need it.
Waiving the two-week rule, is this your motion?
So I'm building up to it.
Okay, good stuff.
I'm building up.
I'm on with you.
Yeah, so, so I'm, what I'm saying is, is that, given everything that we know, there's still some outstanding pieces, I still think it behooves us to, and I move that we bypass the two-week rule and allow the administration the ability to pull money from the emergency fund up to, up to the amount as specified of $229,000.
$225,000.
$225,000, sorry, that's right. $225,000, with which will utilize what's in there, as well as the, the excess that's transferred based on the vote of the 2017 ballot, and we'll leave a balance of $4,062. So I move that we allow them to pull up to that amount from the emergency fund waiving the two.
Is there a second, Michael? Is there any discussion to the motion? Michael?
I just have a point of clarification for the funds. If the state were to miraculously give us all 600 grand, would we be able to put the funds back into the Capital Reserve Fund?
The state is not going to give us 600 grand. It's just not going to happen.
Okay, say they give us 500.
No. The most they're going to give us is 30%, which is $180,000.
Yeah.
So it's not going to happen.
Darn.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I just clarify off what Matt is saying? It's when we had the people from the DOE come and look at the project in totality, including air quality testing, that they said, this is going to be a $600,000 project with everything that Matt and they shared. Therefore, you put that in as what was the whole project, with the idea that the most you could hope for is 30%. So we are hoping we get $180,000. But 600,000 was the overall calculation, based on everything that he was handing over to them.
Mm-hmm. Cindy?
I mean, I agree, I support the need that we need to be able to pay the vendors and whatnot. But I'm wondering if it makes sense to put it on, if it makes sense to vote on it tonight, or just put it on consent for two weeks, you know, at our next meeting, or does it matter either way?
Yeah, in talking with the trustee of the trust funds, Chris Christensen, I had mentioned that this may be coming, and they have certain things they have to do with Cambridge Trust and everything like that, to make the money available. So the sooner I could let him know that to expect this withdrawal, the better he would be as far as managing when this money can be taken out of the trust without a penalty.
Okay, so it makes sense, sooner is better than later, so it sounds like, yeah.
If you wouldn't mind, yeah.
Yeah, makes sense.
Naomi?
This is a little bit sideways, but based on something that you just said, it's reassuring to hear, so tell me if I heard this correctly, that when the site was visited by the DOE, their response wasn't to say, what do you mean, you're spending that much money? It mapped for them to the scope of the project.
Yeah, when I was talking to Marjorie Schoonamaker, who's one of the, she's in school approval, correct? She visits, visits all the schools in New Hampshire. And Amy Clark, who's a principal engineer in that, at that department, too, the two of them looked at me and they said, this is a $600,000 project, hot-dollar project. And they also looked around and they said, there was nothing that you could have done to predict this or to prevent this. And this is what this fund is for. So those are their exact words.
Next time, try to get bees, so we can at least sell the honey to offset the cost, okay? Goodness. So on that note, the motion goes to a vote. All those in favor of expending the, authorizing the expenditure of $225,000 from the District Repair Capital Reserve Fund for emergencies, waiving the two-week rule, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, none? The motion carries 500. And we're on to item number eight, which is the approval of December 18th, 2017 minutes. And is there a motion to approve made by Cindy, second? Seconded by Michael. Are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, none? The motion carries 500. Other, is there any correspondents to come before the board? I received one from a new business, it's a yoga studio, and they were interested in knowing how they can help to support the district, and I put it in the hands of the superintendent's office, and she can leverage as appropriate.
And I got the same one, too, under the guise of the wellness committee, I think it was.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah, so, same one.
Healthcare cost containment, I got you.
Yes.
Six of one, right? So the superintendent has her contact information, and we can set guidelines of what we do with local businesses accordingly. Any other correspondents come before the board? Excellent. Any comments from the board? Marge?
I just wanted to highlight the fact that you've been given materials for Thursday night's budget hearing at your place, including the agenda, and then all of the questions that have been asked by you, with the idea that if for some reason we have inclement weather, that that meeting would be rescheduled for Monday night, January 8th. So just to further highlight that for the public, because it was just posted today.
Excellent. Knock on wood for no need for snow day, but it's not looking like it's, it's a done deal. So is there any business to come before the board? Item number 10. Seeing none? Any committee reports? Seeing none? Public comments? Seeing no public, even though we went through a bunch of budget tonight, I hope they enjoyed it at home. And then take a moment to sign the manifest. Now entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA 91-A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, sections A, B, and C. Do I have a motion? Made by Cindy, I was seconded, seconded by Naomi. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Michael?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
I vote in favor. And Andy?
In favor.
So we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.